Manual checks written for thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-two cents. For a total of eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
Do either of you guys have any questions?
I do not have any.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Steven?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just have one thing. I was just reviewing our budgets versus actuals as of June, or the end of May, and we should be at about ninety-two percent, and almost every division is well below that ninety-two, so we're doing well. So I just wanted to point that out.
Well, what does that mean, well below ninety-two?
Well, we have some divisions in the seventies, um, eighties, so we should be at about ninety-two percent if we were going to spend everything that we budgeted for.
Is that because of late deliveries, or because of superior management?
It's probably both, and it's probably, uh, I mean, obviously, we've been telling our employees to try to cut back, because we had some decreases in this year, so we, so I think everything's going pretty well for this year.
Wonderful. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.
I now call the June seventh, two thousand sixteen, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P.M. Would Councilmember Peterson lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and after that, Councilmember Larson will lead us in an invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for this opportunity to serve Riverton, and to strive to do what is best for our friends and neighbors. Father bless us that we might have insight and understanding that this might be accomplished in thy purpose. Father, we're thankful for all the blessings that we have in this fine country, and bless it that it might continue to have strength, and we say this humbly, "Amen thy son, Jesus Christ." Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Would the city secretary please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Martin Canaan?
Here.
Councilmember Lee Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Sean Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon?
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker?
I am present. Um, I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Bailey this evening.
Motion to excuse Councilman Mike Bailey?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I declare that a quorum is present. Uh, the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay. Mayor votes signed, motion passes. Communication from the floor. Citizens comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda, will be given an opportunity to speak at that time. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record.
Good evening. I'm Helen Warpness. I'm, um, on the Board of Directors for the Volunteers of America Northern Rockies, and I'm just here to kind of inform you about an event and invite you to attend. Um, Camp Postcard Wyoming is next week, June twelfth through the seventeenth. It's on Casper Mountain at the Allen H. Stewart Alliance Camp. It's a value-based camping experience targeting fifth and sixth grade students, with direct involvement and mentoring with a variety of law enforcement and criminal justice professionals. The Riverton Police Department has been actively involved at Camp Postcard for many years, most notably with officers, um, Cody Meyer and Charlie Marshall, although there have been other officers that have been involved. Um, I would like to invite anybody who is interested to join us Thursday, June seventeenth, for Demo Day. It'll probably start around, um, ten-thirty, and then you can see in person the great work that your officers and law enforcement officers across Wyoming are doing to build strong leadership with our youth. My husband Ron and I have attended the past two years, and it is very heartwarming to see and visit with the youth and officers. Following the demos, there will be a picnic and time to interact with the officers, and more importantly, with the youth. Um, our CEO, Jeff Holzinger, said you'll be well fed. Um, Chief Broadhead may have some, some other, um, words to offer, and I'll entertain any questions that you might have concerning the event. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Helen, for coming and telling us about that. Anybody else have anything at this time? You're on the, you're, you're on the agenda. Yeah. Yeah, you're on the, okay. Uh, would the Finance Director please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, May twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen, special meeting slash work session. Approval of the minutes, June seventh, two thousand sixteen, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations, June seventh, two thousand sixteen. Approval of the Municipal Court report for the month of May, two thousand sixteen. Open container permit application, Teton therapy, for August thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, company picnic at Sunset Park from three P.M. to seven P.M. Ordinance number sixteen dash two, zero, sixteen dash zero zero two, and ordinance number sixteen dash zero zero three. Second reading, Riverton Municipal Code, Title thirteen revisions. Proposed ordinance, number sixteen dash zero zero two, for second reading, and ordinance amending Title thirteen, Public Services, revising Chapter thirteen point zero four, billing procedures for public services. Section thirteen point zero four point zero three zero, termination of services. Thirteen point zero four point zero four zero, payment arrangements. Thirteen point zero four point zero five zero, return check fee, and adding section thirteen point zero four point one one zero, base charges for services of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date. Proposed ordinance, number sixteen dash zero zero three, for second reading, and ordinance amending Title thirteen, Public Services, revising Chapter thirteen point zero eight point zero one zero definitions. Section thirteen point zero eight point zero four zero, agreement to rules and regulations prerequisite to commencement of services. Thirteen point zero eight point zero eight zero, city not liable for broken pipes or appretence, appretenses. Thirteen point zero eight point one zero zero, discontinuance of service for failure to comply with regulations. Thirteen point zero eight point two zero zero, fees amount. Thirteen point zero eight point three nine zero, defacing, injuring, bypassing, et cetera. Thirteen point zero eight point four zero zero, metered consumption rates. Thirteen point zero eight point four seven zero, discontinuance of service for failure to pay. Thirteen point eight point five zero zero, fee for reinstating discontinued services of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, items that require further discussion?
Recommendations from the Finance Committee for, uh, claims to be paid in the amount of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and forty-four cents. Checks written for payroll liability for five thirteen of sixteen and five twenty-seven of sixteen, in the amount of six hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Manual checks in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-two cents, for a total of eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and eleven cents.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Your Honor, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Mayor votes signed, motion passes. The next item is retirement recognition. Courtney Bolander. City Administrator's report, please.
I'm already starting, sorry. Courtney? I inherit this from my mom. Anytime I talk about goodbyes, or family, I get emotional. So Courtney's worked for the city, uh, just over nine years. Um, when she arrived, the finances were kind of in disarray. Quite a bit of findings on the audits. Since then, our audits have been superior. Uh, financial situation has been well maintained and properly managed. Uh, Courtney has a gift of words. I've used her in a lot of different situations, both with letters and in meetings, where she does a great job in moderating and facilitating difficult, difficult situations. She can draft a controversial letter that may be somewhat controversial, but in the end, uh, she gets the point across, and you don't know the point has been taken very well. Um, I, I value her advice and, and the direction on a variety of different issues. And so she's, he's been an integral part of our senior staff team in providing input on issues that come up, and she's more than happy to share those, and we appreciate that. So you'd be well missed. And wish you the best in the retirement.
Oh, thank the Lord, it isn't a watch. Exactly what I wanted, and I told my girls, do not get me a watch, I want a face. Oh, no, wonderful. Live well, laugh often, drink much. No, I put that in there. Love. What's that say? I can't either. Love.
Retirement.
Retirement. No wonder you couldn't read that. Courtney Bolander. Thank you very much.
So this, this final thing just came in the mail. Um, many of you may not be aware that Courtney went up to the airport, and she had to hide a gun, strap it to her, her leg, and walk through security to see if you could get a gun through TSA. And I guess she did such a superb job that we got a, an appreciation from the Transportation Security Administration, along with a TSA Wyoming, um, I don't know, some sort of coin, medallion. It's really heavy, so I'd like to present that to you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Weaver. It's been a pleasure. There's my hug.
Have you got something to say, Courtney?
Oh, Mayor, do. Mayor, would you, um, please accommodate me tonight about being a little bit more flexible and less formal in a council meeting?
Sure, go right ahead.
For the first time in twenty-seven years?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. So to begin with, I'd like to thank Mr. Weaver and the department heads. We've had some tough issues, some tough topics. Sometimes, as they know, it's very difficult for me to remain unemotional and not say what comes to my mind. We express our views and our thoughts and our ideas, and I think we have always expressed them respectfully to each other. I know I'm not easy. But doing the right thing and being a good public servant is not easy. You've been tolerant of our distinct management and leadership abilities and styles, and I appreciate you all very much. And thank God for family and friends. Look at them. All twenty-two. Love that. I'd like to start off by introducing my parents, Gary and Mary Campbell. They moved to Riverton five years ago, and, uh, my father was a, uh, is a retired teacher and wrestling coach. My mother was in the banking business. So yes, I wrestle with words very well, and I'm in finance, so I gained, uh, some good abilities from them. My husband is Brad Bolander. I don't know if you've ever met him. He knows all of you by name several times over. We've been married for forty-one years. If you know me, you know that I don't care for titles. Titles don't define who you are. Your actions and the people that you surround yourself by define who you are. We have three children, eleven grandchildren, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank him from the bottom of my heart for the endless nights of voicing my frustrations and listening to me tirelessly talk about council, staff, and municipal government. As I said, I don't particularly care for titles, but one that I will always cherish is Mrs. Bolander. So I was asked by Mia Harris last week, and I think I responded very flippantly to her, and I'd like to apologize. She asked me where I gained my experience and knowledge in municipal government. Well, again, that wasn't easy, and I didn't really give her a rightful answer. I started off in Sinclair, Wyoming, and started working the utility billing department. We're on index cards every month. I worked three days a month, and we would literally write out the utility bill. Name, address, how much their water was, their sewer was, and if we liked them, we put a kind note. If we didn't, they could didn't get anything but the bill. I started the first computer system in Sinclair, mainly because I got tired of making notes on ledgers that were like this big and this big, and Gloria's shaking her head because she knows what I'm talking about. So I learned the hard way. I learned when technology came in that we had to get up to speed. I learned about elections and municipal government, not because I won the three elections that I ran in, it's because I lost three elections. Won by three votes, won by eleven votes, and county clerk by six hundred and some votes in Carpen County in nineteen ninety-eight. Again, it wasn't about winning. It was about respecting the process. This may sound indifferent to you, but I didn't vote for all of you. So I learned about records, not because I knew where they were, it's because I couldn't find them. So in Sinclair, I couldn't find the minutes from years and years and years prior. One day, I heard water. I went downstairs, and guess where the minutes were? On the basement floor, in three inches of water. That was the beginning of my first records management program. That followed me to Saratoga, where again, records are the transparency of government. It's not the transparency for your thoughts or what you believe in. It's a transparency in what this governing body does as a whole. That's what the agendas and the minutes and all the agreements and licenses and everything we do is about offering that transparency. So when I went to Saratoga, I decided to knock down a wall. And in my earnestness to get this wall down, because I got to swing the hammer first. Guess what I found? Built inside a little cubby hole where the Public Works Secretary used to work, and where her legs used to be underneath this desk were minutes that the, the city had lost ever since they had moved into that city hall. Again, records management came into play. It's not all about records, and it's not all about utility billing. It's about working for the people, and I hope that I have demonstrated that in twenty-seven years, because it's been difficult at times and joyful many times. I came to work to River, in Riverton about ten years ago. I had the privilege of working with one of the most honorable men I've ever known, and that was Carter Napier. And although there may be differences, and there may be people out there that don't like me, actually, I know two. There may be people out there that don't like me, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here to do a job, not to be liked or disliked. So it was really a truly rewarding experience to work with him. So I don't mean to be mean and ugly, but it's not about you tonight. This is about thanking the people, being grateful and thankful for the people that have provided me with success. I'll miss April Ramsey's wonderful sense of honesty. Debbie Bessie's steadfast, steadfast approach to her work. Megan Sims' unending kindness, compassion, and willingness to accommodate others. Adam Wyrick's quiet manner and easy smile. Alex Ingle, Alex Inglehart's energetic spoken exchanges that always bring a smile to my face. Diana Rose Green's desire to learn and increase her aptitude and intensity for personal and professional development. Scott Harmelink's easy gait and helpful demeanor. Jennifer and Debbie, who is on the custodial team, I don't know very well, but from our few interactions, they bring a pleasantness and a sense of commitment to the city. I encourage younger members of our team to be trusting and trustful. Be disciplined in your values and standards. Follow your expectations that you have of others. For the more mature members of our team, whoever you may be, I would like to thank Tim Hugus for his sense of humor and constant foundation of faith, genuine kindness, and compassion for all human beings. I would like to thank Keith Jones for his earnestness in recommitting to a better team by fostering relationships. I would like to thank Mia Harris for the level of professionalism and customer service she brought to our organization in which we all aspire to know and understand. I would like to thank Kristen Watson for her determination and hard work by setting standards and values, not only emulated by her personal life, but her professional life as well. This is the kicker. This is Gloria Hardman. She will always be near and dear to me. I'd like to thank her for the balance that she's brought to the many policies and procedures and processes that we have had to build as administrative team. She came to the city of Riverton six months before I did, and more appropriate, she's leaving six months after I am. We had to achieve a lot together as partners and as a team. And no one could ask for a more loyal, dedicated, and trusted teammate than the one I got to work with. For the mature members of our team, I'm forever grateful and blessed to have worked with five exemplary individuals and their unwavering commitment to always do the right thing with fairness and consistency. Remember, we do not kneel to mediocrity. We raise the bar so high that others, others cannot follow by simply standing or walking. They have to high jump. Last but not least, elected officials. Mr. Canaan, thank you for your service to our country, and thank you for always being appreciative and respectful after every meeting. and thank you for always being appreciative and respectful after every meeting. I don't know or remember a meeting where you didn't come over to me directly and thank me, and that meant a lot. Lee, thank you for your friendship over the last 15-plus years. Wham-J Pick that we worked together on and helped to rebuild. And thank you for the laughs that we've shared over a memorable dinner of Job Corps where I thought a candle was butter and tried to spread it on my bread. I really did. Mr. Larson, you leave me speechless. It's not because you're ruggedly handsome. It's because I don't know what you're going to say. Sean, I don't know you very well, but I appreciate the ease and the friendliness that you've brought to the council and to me as a staff member. Holly, your tenacity and your friendship and honesty is to be admired. I wish many more would be open and more willing to acquire those qualities. Again, I'd like to thank my family for being here. I'd like to thank my husband from the bottom of my heart. Mayor, thank you sincerely for the calmness, the guarded language, and the civility you have brought to our municipal government. You're a great example to others. I'm not Peyton Manning. This didn't last 16 minutes, but I do have a final quote. And it's from Margaret Thatcher. Watch your thoughts, for they become words. Watch your words, because they become your actions. Watch your actions, because they become your habits. Watch your habits, because they become your character. Watch your character, for it becomes your destiny, what we think we become. Thank you very much. Mr. Weaver, may I be excused?
You may be excused.
Not for a minute. I just, I just wanted to say what a pleasure it's been to, to work for the, to be part of the city government and, and to be guided by Courtney. You know, we, we come up with these crazy ideas, you know. Why don't we go do that? And Courtney always could bring us back to earth, okay? And, and, and tell us not only, not only why we couldn't do it maybe financially, but why there were logistic problems and, and, you know, other kinds of things that would affect what we were going to try to accomplish. And, and so, um, and, and, you know, I am so convinced that, that government, in order to function, you know, your comments about record-keeping, you know, that is so critical because it's the records that, you know, are amazing, and here I am as mayor, you know, and I'll get some idea. Well, I wonder if we could find that in the minutes. I can't even get out of the building until they've got it in my hand because they know how to find all of those records. We got, we got quite a filing system. I'm impressed. And so, this, this, this city government works so well, and that's because we have people who are always paying attention to detail. Thank you, Courtney. Mr. Larson.
Courtney. I want to thank you. When I came in here, when I came in here as green as green was, and I was put on the Finance Committee, and I used to lose sleep about the large amounts of money we were spending and the amount of money that was going through. And I always have the fear that it's going through a hole in the ground, and we will wake up one day and we can't pay our bills. But after several meetings and sitting through an audit, I didn't have to worry anymore. I'm sorry that you I'm sorry that you only worked 10 years here and that you can't work longer because you've done an excellent job. Your Honor. Lee, Courtney, I want to thank you for your friendship and all your knowledge of running the city of Riverton. You've been a great help to me in the eight years I was on the council before and the two years this year. So again, we'll laugh more often. Thank you.
Your Honor, I'd like to say something to do. Because I spent time up here, same thing. I got everything you guys have said. And she's become a very close friend, and it makes me very, very proud to be her friend.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and you're not leaving town, is that correct? Great. Wonderful. Good night.
Bolander out.
And I promise I won't hit your house with a golf ball.
Sure, sure. Ron?
I'd just like to say that in the four years that I had the pleasure and the honor of serving as mayor for the city of Riverton, the city of Riverton has never had a more professional person work for it than Courtney. And I can't tell you how invaluable her help was. The proudest thing that I had in the four years was that we never had a lawsuit in the city. And it was in no small part to Courtney and the other professional staff that we have. But we're celebrating her this evening, and I would just like to encourage her that there is life after retirement, so. Good job, Courtney.
Thank you, Courtney. The, the next item of business tonight is a report from Michael Higgs on the Veterans Park renovation that's taking place out behind the, the city, city hall. So. Wait just a second here. We'll let everybody clear out, and then we'll be all right. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. And thank you for letting me have this opportunity to present our proposal for the renovations to our Veterans Park.
Pardon? Get that mic closer to you.
I forgot I'm short. Does everybody have a copy of the proposal that I turned in to Mr. Butterfield?
I don't have one, but go ahead.
He's in your packet.
Well, somehow my packet is not on my machine tonight. I'm techn, I'm, did you? Thank you very much. I, I appreciate that. Okay.
Do you want a minute to go over it, sir?
Uh, why don't you just run us through it?
Okay. As you can see, I broke it down into three phases. We started off with the, basically going through fundraising and the easy things such as the brick sales. And going from business to business, we actually had a couple of businesses already come up to me and say, what can we do? And I looked through some of our paperwork because a lot of companies have come to me and said, well, you give me the paperwork and we'll donate. And I've actually haven't found anything over in our office that says, you know, you do this and this and this. So we have a state convention this weekend in Casper, and I was going to go to the State Commander and ask, is there something that we can fill out, you know, give to the, to these companies, or do, is it something I have to come up with? So that's why I was kind of lagging on that. But some of the gentlemen have come up with a overview.
That's great.
And we've also made two more dioroms showing the basically it shows the to the interest park, interest to the park from to surface flats. There's no war flag. That would be going in Phase Two with moving the flags. And these flats here would be a permanent We actually have those made already, and they were really wanting to put them in and stuff like that, but I was like, no, nothing gets done until we get final approval from the council. And so I've kind of kept them at, just doing the fundraising. And with the fundraising, with the brick sales, I also talked to the brick company that's doing it, the donor bricks by Profa Resource out of Denver. And they've done the, the Soldiers Memorial, the Vietnam Mall in DC. I mean, they've done the, what was that, the Olympics walkway and everything in Georgia. I think it was the 2002 or something like that. The one that was down in Georgia. I forget the exact date of it, but they've done massive work, professional. And they're the ones we're going to go through. And with the companies that donate $50 or more along the front of the entrance. Eight by eight paver stones, and we can put their company logo and information on that, and it'll go both sides. So they can get recognition from that, and that will be provided out of our coffers. The other thing was to locate the best two entrances, basically the entrance points for the Veterans Park. And we have another company that is donating the signs themselves. I think they're going to be wooden signs, and they're going to be mitered out and then sealed, so for longevity. But I was hoping for some help on that, is to find out what'd be the two best points to get in and then get approval to put signs up there. And then we'd move on into Phase Two. Like I said, move the flagpoles, then prepare the area around. And then moving the black granite want to move that. I, to be honest, I myself really don't want to move that. I think, you know, it's, it's something that's there, and it'd be more of a headache to move it, but a lot of the people on the committee were like, no, we can move it over here, because they want to move it over here. Sitting in opposing directions as you walk in. But the way I look at it is, it's already there. It's got engraving on the front and back. But there's two individuals that are really adamant about moving it, and I was like, well, we'll see. See what the council says. And then moved, and saw the other monument that, he still hasn't gotten back to me on the estimate on the new monument that we wanted made, and then the two when we do have ceremonies there and we have to march the flags in, those benches make it really difficult to get around and, and come in and then stand post. So that I wouldn't mind moving. Like I said, with the monument itself, I can cease leaving that there, but those benches are really in the way. And you, more or less, when you're marching the flags in, wind up killing a knee or tripping over it completely. Now Phase Three, that'll encompass the far right side. Our last meeting was that we wanted to not make it just the Veterans Park. We want the community involved with it. We've always wanted the community involved with it, and we want the community to be able to enjoy it. So we wanted to put up a pavilion with picnic benches, a couple of permanent barbecue like you would find at the parks whenever you went into like a, a state park or Whenever you went into like, uh, a na- a state park or national park or something like that, you get those, you know, concreted in, too dang heavy to move. Put a couple of those in there, so people can go in there with their family, enjoy it, and be, also be able to see and enjoy the Veterans Park. Uh, like I said, that is stage three. And, uh, by that time, we'll already know how much we've had raised and have available to build on that site. And, uh, I've already, uh, let's see, I've had, uh, one of the committee members, uh, Bill Moore, has talked to the gentleman out at Job Corps, and that he said that they would be willing to build everything. I don't know if he said the pavilion, but everything else, it's like the benches, the picnic tables, and the barbecue pits and everything else. No problem. So, we've had a lot of good response as far as, uh, donors donating money or donating items. And I think, uh, we've even got, uh, ten yards from both concrete companies, uh, donated. Any questions?
Terrific. Mr. Canaan.
Sir, the, I guess the only big change I see from the memorandum of understanding that we did between the veterans and the, and the city, uh, that was the, is the flagpoles.
Yes, sir.
Now, in that MOU, we, we agreed that the city would have responsibility for the two existing flagpoles and that they were lighted. You know, now you're talking about...
Putting one more in.
Well, you're also, it looks like in your memorial, separating those. So, I guess my question would be, you know, again, well, in your diorama down there, you mean, you've got, you don't have two of them together anymore like they're sitting out there. Okay, I guess I was looking at your thing, and it, to me, out there, it looked like you were looking to, to separate them in a distance there, the two existing ones. But that would, that was gonna be my other, my, my concern there is, again, you know, that to make sure that the city was willing to either accept, quote, the third flagpole or, or whatever, you know, to, to see that. Okay, and I guess my next question would be is that, um, have, have you taken all these plans and submitted them to our public works director to get his input as to whether things are doable, not doable, yea, nay?
Yes, sir. Uh, what was it, uh, two, three weeks ago?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
Uh, we are very much in favor of this, uh, improvement, and, uh, Mr. Joe Blurry has been out to verify that there weren't any, uh, irrigation conflicts with the proposed improvements. Um, at most, we'll look at moving a few sprinkler heads where the pavers will be bordering the existing concrete. The only concern that we have is from a, a safety standpoint, should that, um, large upstanding monument be moved, we would just like to verify that it is properly anchored so that during a, a large windstorm or any other type of event, it wouldn't blow over or fall over. Um, the veterans group has been very amenable to, uh, our suggestions. They've been great to work with, so we are in favor of, of these improvements.
And, like I said, to be honest, if it is being again, there's one, one term that I learned while being a, a Navy guy, serving with the Marine Corps. I was a hospital corpsman in the United States Navy, and I did all my sea duty with the Marines. Marine Corps had their saying of Semper Fidellis, which is always faithful. I came up with Semper Gumby, always flexible.
That's great. Sean?
So, I was out there three weeks ago when we did the Arbor Day. Is this going to affect being able to utilize that as the community? Because I see a lot of things now that you're trying to propose, it would be in the way, the way we did it last time. Um, with bringing the flags in, the benches would be in the way. I'm an Army guy, so Semper Gumby isn't really... I'm, I'm, I'm just, have we thought about that? Because I, I'm sitting here looking at where I was, and if those benches are full, so, I mean, you're not, we're taking away from the use of this from the community. Um, my next question is, and I've seen these around every military installation, they have them. Have we thought about the campaigns that are on there? Has that been vetted? Because I'm seeing a couple that might be on there, may not be on there. You know, I, I know of a couple, you know, guys who fought in Panama that live in this town, you know?
Yes.
Panama's not on there.
On the, uh...
Kuwait was, you know?
On the one that I have submitted to the, uh, brick company for the campaign monument, it'll be World War I, World War II, Cold War, then, um, Korea.
I don't, I don't expect you to regurgitate them from your memory. I'm just saying, I just wanna make sure that we look at this, because I don't want somebody to be offended or, you know, not be...
Beirut and Lebanon, not Lebanon, Beirut and Panama.
Okay.
Your honor.
Go ahead.
Perhaps as a point of clarification, and please correct me if I'm, um, misspeaking, but from the proposal that you have in your packet, where it has the campaigns next to the brick pavers, I believe...
Oh, yeah, we did without, uh...
Change that and put that on the upright monument that they proposed.
A lot of space for like World War I, and then crunched space for World War II and Vietnam, and then a lot of space, like, it's just not gonna work. It's gonna be like an accordion. And I told him, why not just take those out and do one campaign monument? Because for the price that we have paid for each one of these campaign monuments, you can put it into one big monument and be able to engrave all the different campaigns on it, probably get in more campaigns that are legit, and then have that whole space in there for just everybody. So, that way, we get away with the, uh, individual campaign stones and with one campaign monument. And unfortunately...
So, this document we're looking at is being completely updated?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I...
As, uh, actually as of five o'clock this afternoon.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm going off what you presented to us.
Yes, sir.
That's why I'm asking these questions. If it's not the most recent document, then I...
Like I said, it was actually, uh, it, it was good up until about five o'clock this afternoon when I, I was talking to Mr. Sharp at the, the brick company this afternoon. He finally got back to me.
Okay.
Anybody else? Um, okay, so, uh, what, what kind of a motion, I mean, we've got this, uh, MOU in place. Okay, what, what do you need from us to say, yeah, we like what you're doing?
Basically, I, I, again, I don't want us to proceed without the city council saying, yes, you can break ground, yes, you can do this and do that. But my biggest concern really was this monument and making sure that when, like I said, this, the MOU states that what is there is nulls concern, and what we put in is art.
Sure, and they thought that was a good spot.
Why?
Yeah. Well, and it looks to me like if you, if you, uh, you know...
Then there's that issue of, if we move it and a windstorm comes along, is it gonna stay?
Well, it'll have to be adequately engineered, and it needs to be, and, and, and I guess my thought is that, that when, at the point where you've got the money for the campaign monument, okay, and you'd like to put that up, okay, then, that's the time to also consider moving the existing monument. You know, and so it's kinda in stages, right?
And that would be my next question. Are you looking for approval for e- each phase separately, or are you looking for an approval of the overall thing tonight? Because, I mean, I know for a fact that the vets don't have enough money...
No.
To, to do a lot of this, so, I mean, I guess my...
Phase one and phase two, definitely, we, we can prog- progress without a problem with that. Phase three, oh heavens, no.
Okay, then, then I would, I would think maybe then, sir, that we could probably go with looking at their, basically, phase one as their fundraising, but, uh, if we can look at phase two and say that the city council is, is good with those, those changes to Veterans Park, then I would maybe recommend that we do it in phases, and then, uh, like you said, give them a chance to raise their money and come back and, and then come back and say they're ready to commit to phase three.
Okay. Your honor. Mr. Martinez?
I have another proposal to make i- in light of that. We could sit here and approve the whole thing and then say, contingent that any plans, uh, difference than what the proposal is, brought before the city council, and the city council approve it before the changes are made. That way, if they, if they wanna change something in phase three and not do it and not move the monument, they would let us know, and we could approve that.
If there was, i- i- if, if there's deviation from, from this...
From the, the proposed plan, yes.
From those proposed, from that proposal. I guess, I guess the other thought that strikes me is that, is that the city council can say, we've got confidence in the, in the veterans, uh, organization and, um, and, and are willing to work with you, and, and, and as long as you can get along with staff, we don't need to hear you again.
Any, uh, changes to Mr. Butterfield?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and so we'll just make sure that the engineering works and, and that we can figure out the lighting and the electrical and, you know, all those kinds of things as they come up. Uh, they'll just, they'll just be, well, a thousand, there'll be a thousand challenges, okay? But, but we can work those out one step at a time.
Roger that.
Okay?
And we built that into the MOU, so...
Yeah, I think, I think our MOU is, I think our MOU is adequate. Okay, certainly got my confidence.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and, and then just, let me add this. Are, are you familiar with, uh, Robert Martinez? He's a, he's a local, uh, artist here in Fremont County. On, on West Main Street at the old High Plains Power Building, there's a mural on the, on the, on the wall there, uh, on the retaining wall, uh, which is black and white, uh, but at one time, there was an idea that it might actually become colored. And, um, and so, uh, Mr. Martinez was in the office, at my office, uh, a month ago, and he's trying to put together some kind of a proposal uh, for the community art center or something like that, and, and would the city help sponsor that? And we said, sure, we'd be the, you know, we'd be the fin- financial guy, you know, we'd do that all the time for various groups. And, um, and so, that, he, you know, but this is a s- a staged deal, so he puts in an application and, well, at any rate, he came back to visit and tell me about what it was. We went out back and looked at the big wall, you know, the back of City Hall. Okay, and he looked at that, and in about five minutes, he said, you know, that'd be quite a canvas. So, he, he, he already could see it. One of those, one of the sections between the doors could be a huge American flag waving, another one, an eagle. Uh, he, he could see all kinds of things that he would put in there, and then, and then went on to talk about the kinds of, of, uh, funding that's available for this kind of art. And, um, and so, it's entirely, and so he, he went, he went away. He's gonna come back someday with some drawings and, and some proposals. Okay?
Phase three.
So, that's gonna, so, so we, we have something here, and, and we can do it in stages, one section of that, of the building at a time. And, uh, but eventually have, have some, uh, you know, nice artwork, uh, you know, just across the parking lot.
Phase three, number one. With the approval of the commanders and ultimately the city council, we would, at this point, advertise the competition for the best artistic mural with Veterans Memorial theme to be painted on the back of the wall of City Hall facing the Veterans Memorial Park to the general public. The final time and date, as well as the judging, would be set and done by the commanders and the city hall.
There you go, so, so, you know, I think that's a great idea. Okay? And, and Mr. Martinez is already cranking away.
Cool.
Okay? All right. So...
Anything else?
I'm, uh, do you wanna, do you wanna motion on this, or are we, or, you, you think you want one? You wanna make it?
No.
No. Mr. Canaan.
Yes, sir, I would move that we accept the, uh, propose, proposal, uh, changes to City Park, or, excuse me, to Veterans Park as presented tonight, uh, in accordance with the memorandum of understanding.
I second that.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Done.
Thank you very much.
The, uh, the next item is the, uh, Riverton Splash Pad Group Grant Application Submittals on behalf of the City of Riverton. City Administrator's report.
Yes, your honor. As you know, this, the City of Riverton is the fiscal agent for the Splash Pad Group, and, uh, they would like to apply for three different grants. One is the Wyoming Community Foundation Grant, the Rocky Mountain Power Foundation Grant, and the First Interstate Bank System Foundation Grant, each in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Uh, that needs to be approved by the council. Uh, we're preparing letters of support for those applications, and I believe most of them are due by June fifteenth. And so, uh, we're just asking for approval to apply for those grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion. We approve the, uh, grant proposal for the Splash Pad.
Second.
Been moving seconded. Discussion, your honor? Mr. Martinez?
Last night, we had, uh, Fremont County School District Number Twenty-Five Recreation Board meeting, and the Splash Pad Group was there. And we have set aside thirty thousand dollars for matching funds to help them out on this, so they can get the grants approved.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Terrific. Thank you.
Hey, I was in on it, too.
Terrific. Terrific. That's great. Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The next item is Public Hearing, Consideration of Resolution Number One Three Three Eight, Fiscal Year Sixteen Seventeen Proposed Budget. City Administrator's report, please.
Yes, your honor. Pursuant to the direction of the city council and as required by state law, the staff has prepared the fiscal budget that represents a balanced approach for operating the City of Riverton and for the citizens. Uh, the, a budget work session was held, publications of the public, uh, the budget hearing was advertised with the final phase of the passage of Resolution Thirteen Thirty Eight. Uh, the budget process started back in March, with many people going over the revenues, expenditures, and cost-cutting measures. Uh, many people were included in the process, all of our department heads, finance director, HR director, and business service manager. The city's total budget, including capital, is twenty-one million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and forty-three. This has been a, a particularly difficult budget year with decreased revenues. A lot of, uh, time and effort has gone to preparing this budget, and I'd like to thank our budget team for their hard work. When revenue started to decrease in the current budget, uh, s- When revenue started to decrease in the current budget, uh, staff made some reductions to the existing budget. Effective May first, two thousand sixteen, we instituted spending freeze, only making purchases that were necessary for operation, restricting any travel and training to only ones that were previously registered for and cutbacks to line items such as snow removal, beautification kiosk, road materials, gas and oil, heat, diesel vehicle and equipment maintenance and reduced or eliminated some of the capital projects. In ways of reductions in this next fiscal year, the city had several retirement of longtime employees, which means the hiring of new employees at lower salary provided some cost savings over the past twelve months. Uh, looking forward, we have budgeted 420,000 less in salaries than we did, uh, last year. Staff is proposing leaving some positions vacant and using interims as possible and a decrease in seasonal employees. Uh, in this budget, there are no step merit increases. Cell phone stipends are cut in half from fifty to twenty-five, travel and training reduced by twenty percent, overtime reduced by at least ten percent and educational assistance was cut entirely. In all the enterprise funds, revenues exceed expenses in all funds with the exception of the airport, which requires a transfer from the general fund. In ways of revenues, the city's general fund revenue is estimated at $7,734,055. Actual revenue projections are reduced this year by approximately 565,000. There were slight increases in the liquor license and cigarette tax. Largest increase is from supplemental funding from the state of Wyoming by 304,468. Historically, since you can't count on the revenue supplemental funding, has been used for contract for services and capital improvement projects in the general fund and the airport. Uh, the general fund has fourteen departments or divisions. Projected expenditures is decreased with the majority well below the hundred percent from last year. Staff was notified that the city will not incur a health insurance increase this year, which is great news. Dental insurance increased by six percent, however, the cost to the city is only 2,525. There will be no increase on retirement or workers' compensation. The capital plan for this fiscal year decreased this year to $3,650,700 plus 1.6 million and one percent projects. Some of the projects that are in the capital plan is the design work on the North Federal Stormwater Project, the Wild Link upgrade in the Police Department, Riverton Water Supply Project, wastewater plant improvements, Cliffview Lift, Lift Station, new garbage truck, engineering for landfill remediation, several items at the airport related to the new ARV truck, modifications to the building to house the truck and mowing and operations equipment. And so it's our recommendation that the council adopt by Resolution Thirteen Thirty Eight. Thank you.
The chair would entertain a motion to, uh, open the public hearing.
Your honor, I make a motion that we open a public hearing on Resolution Number Thirteen Thirty Eight, Fiscal Year Sixteen Seventeen Personal Budget.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak?
Your honor, seeing no one's open to speak at the public hearing, I will make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be closed. Mayor votes aye. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of Resolution Thirteen Thirty Eight.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve Resolution Thirteen Thirty Eight.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say thank you to all the staff for your work and effort. Uh, first time doing this, you guys made it very easy for me to understand, to follow, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Canaan?
Again, sir, uh, you, you know it's coming, uh, but I, I'll commend staff on, on, on working with this budget and, and giving the city a balanced budget. You know, if I'm not mistaken, during the work session, Mr. Weaver told us that, uh, that our budget this year is down right around 11 million from what we had last year. Um, you look at the, the cuts that, you know, we've asked staff to do, most of the departments are either state level or, or decreased. Uh, you're, you're talking about, we didn't have to let anybody go, but I guess by attrition, you would say that you saving money because you let people are retiring and you're hiring people back in at a lower salary. Um, you know, nobody got a step increase, you've cut travel and training, uh, you've reduced overtime, you've cut out educational assistance. And with all that, we are giving the airport a 52% increase. And again, I, I will say that to me, that is outrageous, to think that we ask staff to take that kind of budget, make it work for the city, have our departments go out and do as best job they can of either staying level or taking cuts. And then to give the airport that type of an increase to me is, is outrageous. It truly is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Um, all those, Mr. Larson?
What amount are we spending on the waste, on the landfill remediation?
Uh, your honor, I believe that's $150,000.
And that's going to whom?
Your honor, I believe we, uh, budgeted 50,000 for the remediation this year.
Is that a study or is that actually gonna be pumping and treating?
Your honor, uh, looks like Ms. Hardman is verifying that number at this time.
Okay, we'll wait.
I guess so, second.
Last time we had that, we had somebody come in and say that we had some, uh, treatment levels in a well. We didn't know how much, we didn't know the increases and they were gonna get right back to us and I don't remember missing any meetings and I don't know.
Your honor, that, I, I stand corrected, that is 50,000 dollars. And that is for engineering to, to go into more depth in those different options because the information that we were given in that first work session is not sufficient to make a decision.
That's a politically correct statement. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Uh, the next item of business is the Reach Foundation Subdivision Agreement, Amendments Number One and Two. Community Development Directors Report, please.
Yes, your honor. In twenty-ten, Reach Foundation platted a portion of land that is located north, on the north end of College View Drive. That plat, uh, we, we did a subdivision agreement at that time, um, to address the subdivider responsibilities. Uh, the original plat, uh, was Reach First Edition and it was comprised of twelve lots and, uh, lots one and two were sold and developed. And then the city water and sewer lines were installed and most of the other required, public improvements were completed that were required on that subdivision agreement. In the fall of 2015, Reach submitted a replat of the original, um, plat and, that had been recorded in 2010 and, uh, this was, this plat was approved by the Planning Commission and city council in October of 2015 and then they did record that plat, uh, in March of 2016. This new plat now consists of one lot, three A, um, which was the combining of lots three through ten of the original subdivision plat. The, um, original plat had lot one and two that were sold and then there are eleven and twelve that were unchanged and they remain as Reach Foundation First Edition. In light of this replat, uh, we did need to make some amendments to the, uh, original subdivision agreement. Uh, city staff worked with Reach, uh, foundation personnel and we came up with an amendment one that addresses the public improvements required when lots eleven and twelve are developed in the future and also an amendment two, which addresses the newly formed lot three A. Lot three A included, uh, the rest of the lots that were in the original subdivision as well as an additional portion of land that was annexed into the city at that point in time, further to the north. There's, uh, it's close to, um, Cooper Road. Let's see, um, the, the improvements that are required that we have in that subdivision agreement are water lines, sanitary, sewer mains, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, streets, storm drain, catch basin, light poles and street signs. And as stated in the subdivision agreement, the agreement shall run with the land and shall be binding with the heirs, assigns and successors except for any existing agreements between the city and the subdivider. The, uh, Reach Foundation has, uh, sold this piece of property now to the school district so they will end up being, uh, the entity that will be, um, required to, to follow the requirements of this, of these amendments, amendment one and amendment two. Amendment one will actually, um, let's see, I think that's right. Amendment one will be the one that Reach will maintain and they, when they, uh, in the future, either sell or develop lots eleven and twelve, then they will have to follow amendment one and then the school district then would be amendment two and that's part of the reason for changing the subdivision agreement. That's all I have.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion that we approve the agreement, amendment one and two for the Reach Foundation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Memberman of Understanding, Critical Air Service Group, CAST, Public Works Directors, report, please.
Thank you, your honor. As you are aware, on April fifth, the governing body of the City of Riverton approved a contract with Key Lime Air operating as Denver Air Connection to commence service July one, uh, at Riverton Regional Airport. This service would be an add-on to the existing service that Sheridan had, running from Sheridan to Denver. Uh, the Critical Air Service Group, or known as CAST, represents the interests of both Sheridan and Johnson Counties for improved commercial air service at Sheridan County Airport. One of the primary duties of CAST is to manage the minimum revenue guarantee associated with Denver Air Connection service to Denver. As Riverton and Sheridan will soon share commercial air service, it is necessary that CAST and the City of Riverton define their respective responsibilities associated with the upcoming Sheridan, Riverton and Denver route. More specifically, the entities need to define the manner by which the MRG will be managed between each of the communities. With that stated, um, the Fremont Air Service Task Force, City of Riverton and CAST have worked together to prepare the MOU coming before you this evening. Uh, this MOU specifically addresses the responsibilities of each community in regards to this new air service. CAST has already approved the MOU that's coming before you and in brief, the MOU covers the following provisions. The City of Riverton and CAST agree to pay 50% of the weekly MRG, Minimum Revenue Guarantee invoice associated with the Sheridan, Riverton and Denver route. CAST and the City of Riverton agreed to, to designate a single point of contact to regularly communicate between each party. CAST and the City of Riverton agreed to participate in monthly meetings to discuss the operating, um, issues associated with the air, um, the shared air service route, excuse me, and to discuss matters such as fair management, flight schedules, the minimum revenue guarantee and marketing strategies. Uh, the term of the agreement will commence upon the last date signed and shall remain in full force until terminated. Ninety-day notice is required from either party to terminate this memorandum of understanding. Furthermore, if either party fails to pay its 50% portion of the minimum revenue guarantee within the contracted timeframe, the MOU will expire and either party can then choose to pay for the other party's 50% portion of the MOU in order to consider, excuse me, in order to continue the associated Denver Air Connection, commercial air service route in their community. There is no budget impact, uh, for the adoption of this memorandum of understanding. It merely defines the responsibilities already spelled out in the contracts approved by the City of Riverton and CAST for the service received by Denver Air Connection or Key Lime. Uh, thank you, your honor.
Uh, thank you. The chair would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the CAST memorandum of understanding.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Uh, memorandum of understanding, Minimum Revenue Guarantee, Fremont County, City of Riverton and the City of Lander. City Administrators Report, please.
Yes, your honor. So, as you know, our, our Minimum Revenue Guarantee is 1,988,483. And White Dot Aeronautics is, uh, their contribution is 1,193,90 dollars. We have a SCADSD grant, uh, from the federal government of 481,810 and then the local contribution is 313,583. So this Fremont County, the City of Riverton and the City of Lander have all committed funds uh, to meet this Minimum Revenue Guarantee assuring commercial air service to Fremont County. So in the MOU, it spells out kind of the roles, um, for handling this money. The first is the MRG Subcommittee will be created within FAST that will administer the funds. The Subcommittee will comprise of one representative from Riverton, Lander and the county. The committee will review, approve and recommend payment of the invoices to fiscal agent. Now, that'll occur on a weekly basis. The City of Riverton will be the primary fiscal agent with the county treasurer as the alternate. Each entity will contribute 200,000 to the fiscal agent. Monies will be placed in a special revenue fund of the fiscal agent. Deposited money will be used to pay for the MRG and pay the contract with Forecast Inc., an independent company consulting that will manage the airline ticket inventory. Um, if the agreement between the City of Riverton and Key Lime is terminated, residual money will go back to the three entities by the same percentages they contributed. So it's staff recommendation that we approve the MOU with Fremont County and the City of Lander. Fremont County has already approved this. Uh, once we approve it, it will go to Lander and they will approve it, uh, mid-June and they've already kind of approved it and they've reviewed it and said it looks fine.
Thank you. Yeah, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Fremont County, City of Riverton and the City of Lander on how we're gonna handle the Minimum Revenue Guarantee.
Your honor, I make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding between, uh, Riverton and Lander for the MRG.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Your honor.
Lee?
I, I, the point is that you made the motion of Riverton or Lander, Fremont County's also in on that, correct? Was your motion still hold with Fremont County?
Yes.
Well, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Missed that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Fremont Street Storm Sewer Project Bid Award, Public Works Directors, report, please.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, the action before you relates to a one percent project. This is, uh, actually a project that has, uh, been before the city as a, as a needed project for a number of years, for a number of years now, excuse me. Um, it pertains to, uh, North Eighth West and Fremont Street. We basically have a drainage problem there that has, uh, contributed to significant asphalt degradation and concrete degradation.
degradation and concrete degradation. In years previous, Inberg Miller prepared preliminary plans to improve this intersection and improve the drainage at this location. In working with the one percent committee, the Fix Our Roads Citizens Committee, staff identified this location as a, an area of potential repair and use of one percent funds. Under the direction of the one percent committee, they advised staff to finalize the preliminary plans that we had in place and put this project out to bid for improvement with the one percent funds. With that direction, staff directed Inberg Miller engineers to finalize the plans and specifications from that preliminary design set and put the project out to bid. The project was advertised for bid on May fourth and eleventh of two thousand sixteen. Five contractors attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and bids were received and opened May thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, with the following results. Dave's Asphalt Company of Riverton, Wyoming at two hundred and ninety-nine thousand and thirteen dollars. Ellis Concrete of Lander, Wyoming at one hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifteen cents. LCI Construction of Pavilion, Wyoming at two hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. And Jerry Bornhoff Construction Incorporated of Riverton, Wyoming at one hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. Both staff and Inberg Miller engineers have reviewed each of these bid submittals for responsiveness to specifications, and Inberg Miller and staff recommends the city council award the bid to Ellis Concrete in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifteen cents. Currently, the one percent project, excuse me, the one percent fund has approximately one million eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and twelve thousand, excuse me, eight hundred and three dollars for projects at this time, and this is subtracting out the current obligations that we do have from the two other projects you have awarded this year. So again, staff recommends the award go to Ellis Concrete of Lander, Wyoming. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. The chairman entertain a motion?
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Ellis Construction of Lander, Wyoming, on the Fremont Street Storm Sewer Project?
Second.
It has been moved in seconded, discussion?
Your honor.
Go ahead, Mr. Larson.
Do we have any estimate of our own, what that would cost?
Your honor, off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I'm not remembering the engineer's estimate. I can definitely look into that and respond to you.
Is it close?
The bid that we are recommending for award, I know was under. If, I'm speaking off of memory, I believe we had a hundred and seventy-five thousand set apart for this project, but I would like to verify that.
Kyle, the reason I'm questioning is, we've got a wide variance, and two hundred and ninety-nine thousand down to a hundred and forty, there's almost fifty percent there. So, I'm just, you know, just curious.
Your honor, that's a tough question to address, and as staff, I think the only thing we can do is verify that these submitted prices comply with every bid specification out there. The worry that we do have as staff and as a city that, is that a bidder missed something in their bid. But after review and having a third party also review these documents, the, the package was completely responsive to our specifications, and therefore, we will hold this contractor to the price that they have submitted. Expect them to complete a positive project.
The reason for that, we had a thirty-five thousand dollar oops on Riverview for a run-around water system, and we missed, we missed that, we turned off the water, and some people in, down at the driving range couldn't drink for a while, so I'm always questioning those thirty-five thousand dollar, we didn't see that, oops.
Sure.
Thank you.
Boy, this has been a bad intersection for a lot of years.
Yeah, your honor, the prior mayor, I wish he was still here, because that was one he wanted fixed for many years, so...
Wow, and the mayor before that.
Yeah.
Isn't that something, that I get to do it? Do I get a plaque on it? That'd be terrific.
I think that one's been on the project ever since this street was built.
You know, and it's always something, it's always something, thankfully, we've got one percent money to work with it, because that was always in the capital budget to do, but it was a nice, easy, discreet project that you could cut out to deal with some cost overrun someplace else, and so it just never got, it was in there year after year after year, but never got done. Yeah, that's great. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Council committee reports and council members roundtable. Ms. Gibbon, have you got anything for us tonight?
I don't.
Okay, Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I had the opportunity, I spoke earlier to go to the Arbor Day, so on your behalf.
Thank you.
Very, very well represented, it was a windy day, early windy day.
Great.
But Kyle did a good job, held it together. It was nice, you know, seeing the recognition of the government, the participation that comes in, seeing the whole community kind of get to do that. And then had a chance to go up to the Fly of Riverton, the open house they did on Saturday. Kevin and those guys did a really good job of presenting everything and giving a nice opportunity for the community to come out and check out the organization, so it was a lot of fun in the, in the community the last couple weeks.
Good. Mr. Larson?
Received several phone calls on the Holiday Inn property that we have a commercial hay process there, and the landowners next to that triangular part are objecting to raising hay in the city of Riverton. They want it cut, they don't want a three feet, four feet of grass growing next to their fence. That's that triangle on the right-hand side, and driven past it and saw that somebody had cut an edge close to the sidewalk, so, but he is, he, he's adamant about it, and I can understand that. I've got thirteen acres I've been working on myself, and some of it is pretty deep, so, you know, Rosie needs to write a letter to somebody. I know that's supposedly grass, but there are weeds in it.
There are weeds in it, yes, but there, but you, you said a commercial hay crop? They actually intend to cut it for hay?
Yeah, that's what he's been told, but I, I don't care. This is not a farm, if this were outside the city limits, then I'd say yippie skippy, don't do it. If it's on prison farm road, yeah, but right there in the middle of sunset and, and happy right above Walgreens there, it's, there's, I just don't understand having a hayfield right there that should be taken care of. In the past, the city has always taken their responsibility and shredded that right down to the ground, but city's budget is pretty tight, and I don't think we should be responsible for it.
Yeah, your honor, if I could just respond a little bit?
Yeah, go ahead.
If you can help with that, but they have been out there, and the way our weed ordinance is written, it's, it's noxious weeds, so grass is not declared a noxious weed, so if, if they truly are cutting that, apparently they're going to donate the, the amount they make on this grass to a nonprofit. She doesn't see any violation with how it is right now, because it's, our ordinance doesn't say everything over fifteen inches have to be cut. It's strictly noxious weeds are, are the issue.
Well, but Steve, the problem there is that it's not the noxious weeds, it's the height of the, of the, whatever is there is hiding all of the junk that is being discarded, because it's, it's out of sight, it's out of mind. And that's what they're objecting to, is the casualness of people just dumping their and leaving that and being party, I mean, that drives me absolutely up the wall. People have no respect for your property and throw stuff on it, and the only way you can keep that out is by keeping it in a tidy mess, in tidiness. Case in point is Webbwood Road above Tom Utes Ford on the right-hand side has got some of the ugliest junkyard I've ever seen in my entire life, and I've been in some nasty places. That overgrown trees and spools of used wire and everything else, and cars and transformers. I'm about ready to walk over there and say, there's a leaking transformer and call the So, I would think that we could think of something to encourage them to keep their area more tidy.
Your honor?
Go ahead.
I'll add just a little bit to this. Most of that, I shouldn't say most, but it is, the biggest share of that property is grass, is what it was previously. Now, there are quite a few weeds, which I noticed last year when we got them to cut them. On the southeast side of that property, there are, were a lot of weeds. They sprayed quite a bit last year. This year, they want to do the same thing, is spray anything that is weeds, and then they, there is a farmer who was going to mow it approximately on the twentieth, and then that, that, whatever he gets off of that is donated. I don't know whether it's to, to who or to the person, but there is nothing in our code that says the height of the weeds, and it says nothing about grass. Grass in, the grass is not addressed in our code at this point in time. And if they mow that at that point, it'll look a lot better than it would if we, you know, if we got rid of all the grass that's there and let it be a dust bowl, so when we kind of discussed it quite a little bit and decided that that probably, since it isn't against the code, we would do that. We did ask that they mow along the fences on both parts of their property to at least alleviate anything that would be next to the prop, to the property owner's property. They are going to cut that right, a matter of fact, I think they started doing some of that already.
Your honor?
Mr. Larson?
Are we talking the twentieth of this month? Other words, today's the seventh, and so the twentieth of June, we're going to go in there and skin that right down?
That is what, the little thing, it says mowed around the twentieth. The empty lots are scheduled to be mowed around the twentieth. I'm reading this from Rosie's notes from when she talked with the maintenance person and then with Mr. Archer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could I comment on that? I guess I can. Okay, that's not being irrigated, and so the only thing that is growing that grass right now is the, is the really good moisture that we got this spring. And, and so grass, which starts to grow early in the spring, is very competitive and actually is going to help maintain the control over the broadleaf weeds that's on that piece of ground. And so the grass is gonna, is, is a weed control program in and of itself, and so that competition from the grass is a good thing. If we wait until that grass matures and has set seed well at the time that it gets cut, then we've depleted the moisture out of the soil. We cut that, and the grass is going to go dormant, and most of the weeds will go dormant on that piece of ground, and we'll be able to cut it one time and not have to go back in there every two or three weeks and cut it again. Whereas if we start cutting it early in the spring, before that grass has a chance to mature, then the grass continues to try to grow until it goes to seed or exhaust the moisture that's in the soil.
It's at seed right now.
Right, okay, and so what we've got here is just, because of the moisture this spring, it gives us, gives the property owner there an opportunity that he normally wouldn't have to deal with that. And so, yeah, he can cut some grass off of that and put up a few bales of hay, and, but then when he gets it all cut, then mostly what's going to happen is that field's just going to turn brown, unless we get a whole bunch of precipitation, and, and then that'll be short the rest of the summer.
Cool, thank you.
Okay? So, I, I don't think that that's, I don't, I don't think what they proposed is a bad deal.
No, no, I think it's good.
Okay? All right. Ms. Martinez?
Your honor, I think I reported on what we had in the meeting of the rec board earlier, so I don't have nothing else.
Okay, Mr. Canaan?
Nothing.
Nothing. Mr. Weaver?
Yes, your honor. I'd like to give kudos again for the Fly of Riverton on Saturday. That was really a, a great event, enjoyed that, and a lot of people showed up from the community, and so the FAST team did a great job. Our, our work session next week, we're going to have Jane Juvi come, or I'm Budsmann, if you can say that three times as fast as you can. She'll be here to describe some of the things that she's been working on, so I think that'll be really interesting. Also, the Job Corps will be here. She's going to come and talk about what they've been doing in the past year. It's been open for a year, and some of the things they're doing, participating in the community. We have auditors in town this week, so if you want to stop off and visit with the auditors about anything, feel free to come in. And then we've started fogging this week, that was in the newspaper on Monday, we started fogging, so you'll hear that sound going around and mosquitoes dropping. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I had an opportunity to go to the Job Corps last week. The chief and I were up there, visited with some folks from the Department of Labor, kind of their annual checkup with the city to make sure that we're happy with the way things are going, and, and, you know, and everything we could report to them was positive about Job Corps' performance and, and their, you know, little place in the sun up on Airport Hill, and, and pretty excited, and then they really insisted that we take a tour, and, you know, and both the chief and I have been up there many times for a tour, but they got us out the back door, and holy cow, they have got, they must have, they must have, what, thirty pieces of heavy equipment there now that they're teaching guys how to run? And on top of that, they've got, they've got oil patch, they've got a, they've got a tank battery, they've got condensers, they've got, they've got all kinds of stuff there that, that, you know, shows people how all of that equipment works from the standpoint of oil field maintenance. They're, they're ready to take their students to the next level on, on oil patch, just of course, at the time when the oil patch is going south. And, but nonetheless, the part of what they're teaching there is not so much, is not, is not so much how to drill well, but how to maintain that equipment that is already in place. And so, that's going to be, that's, that's going to teach these guys some real good skills, and on top of that, then you've got all that heavy equipment to work with. Those guys will come out of there ready to go to work someplace, make, make good money. And so it's a pretty impressive operation, and, and it's great that we've got it, we've got it here in, in Riverton. Julie Gassner reported that they're up in the neighborhood at two hundred and forty out of the three hundred and some students that they anticipate having, and their problem right now is that they are, they're full as far as men. And so that next sixty slots that they're looking for needs to be women, and they're trying, just because of the dormitory space that's available, the only men that they could take on would be people who already live in the community and can, could commute. But I just, it's amazing how they have built that program and brought so many people in in that length of time. It's just, you know, those of us who are involved in that way back when, you know, it's hard to imagine that it is real. Finally, finally got here, so, you know, if there's anything, if there's anything about government, it's that any, any one single administration has a very small role to play in getting some kind of a program actually established and operating. So, and, and just, just again, I mean, I tried to tell Courtney how important I thought she was, but, you know, this is going to be, this is going to be a real challenge for the city, okay, to find somebody of her caliber to... To find somebody of her caliber to, to, uh, come in and provide us with the same level of expertise and understanding. Uh, that's an essential part of government, is, is this record-keeping, you know? Got to watch, got to watch where every penny goes and be able to show how you're doing it. Uh, and then all the records, you know, everything's got to be done. You know? So, I know there's people that think that government ought to run like a business, and then you turn around and look at all the laws that government has to operate under that businesses simply don't have to deal with. And you can see that government doesn't run like a business at all. Much more complex and, and transparent and open and, uh, difficult in, in a lot of ways. And because of that, aggravatingly time-consuming. We don't need an exec session tonight. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. We're adjourned at eight forty-five.